Good evening, everyone. I would ask that you would all please rise as Chaplain Bruce Norgard of Lake Region Healthcare leads us in the invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, as we gather here to conduct business governing the city of Fergus Falls, we thank you for all those that are here. Those who are serving in elected positions, as well as those that are here through the training they've received to provide the services and support for our community. We ask that all deliberations and decisions be guided by your leading. We ask that you help them to accomplish their duties, not just doing the minimum to get by, but rather to do their best, working from the heart for your people in this city. We thank you for those that are here, residents, businesspeople, media representatives, to provide input for issues affecting how we as a city serve and support one another. And we thank you for the city staff who've done the work of preparation for this meeting as they accomplish the mandates of this body and of this city. We again ask for your guidance as the business of this city is accomplished this evening for the benefit of all involved. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30 April 1st, 2019, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Yes. You never start with me. It's your turn.
Here.
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 We have a quorum.
First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth.
Thank you, Your Honor members. Good evening. We don't have any changes to the agenda this evening, so.
With that, I entertain a motion approving the agenda as presented. Thank you, Mr. Fish.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson II. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Same sign, that motion carries. Under public hearings, we have one final cost hearing this evening for Public Improvement 6070, which is the 2018 sidewalk driveway improvement project, and I will call on our city engineer, Brian Yvaro.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Your Honor and members. Before you is Public Improvement 6070. This is a 2018 sidewalk improvement program, and this is the final cost hearing for this project. This is 100% petition project utilized by property owners throughout the city. Individual notices have been sent out pursuant to 429 policy and city, excuse me, statute and city policy indicating the individual residence for this program. I'm just going to give a quick recap, go through on the bullets and everything, type of project, 2018 sidewalk driveway improvements, 100% petition project for this, locations miscellaneous throughout the city. Hearing date today is April 1st, 2019. The interest rates for the assessed work is set at 5.15%. The assessment rates vary depending on the assessment amount. Included in the packet is Excel spreadsheet breakdown of all. We have seven individual assessments associated with this project. On the city's behalf, we levy approximately $30,000 for this project. So at this time, I'm requesting you open a public hearing for anybody to be heard on this project.
Thank you, Brian. With that, I will open the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this subject, please step to the lectern and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we will close the hearing, and it's back to the council. We will need a resolution adopting the final cost assessment for Public Improvement 6070.
I'll offer that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Discussion.
Any questions?
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no bids to award this evening. Under petitions and communications, we will have a proclamation declaring April 2019 as the days of biking month in the city of Fergus Falls. But before we do that, I'd ask Mr. Wayne Hurley, would you like to come and tell us some of the events that you have going on in the next couple of months surrounding?
Sure. Thanks, Your Honor. I was not prepared to do this, so if you'll excuse me for a second, I'm going to actually go on my phone. And I was starting a Facebook Live video for the pedal Fergus Falls page, so that was probably not the greatest live video that's ever been. I guess for the internet. What I need to do is go on here and find the event so that I can kind of give you a quick recap of what's coming up here. So April is 30 days of biking month internationally, and so we're celebrating that today, so hopefully, I know we have at least four council members who signed up. Are you willing to raise your hands if you signed up as a council member? Scott did too. Okay, so five. Awesome. So thank you all for doing that. So hopefully you got your ride in today, and if not, you've got some time after the meeting. So I was talking with a colleague today who came up with an idea that you could ride from five minutes to midnight until five minutes after midnight every other day. Whatever works for you. This is great. However you want to count it, there's no.
Indoor cycling counts.
Indoor counts, yep, whatever works for you. So we just love to see the participation from the community in that. Couple things we do have coming up, April 6th, this Saturday at 2:00 PM at Adams Park near the Otter, the Otter statue, we're going to have our big group photo and do a quick bike ride, just kind of around through the neighborhood and then over to Dairy Queen where they're going to give everybody a free ice cream cone. So we've been doing that every year for the past few years, so hopefully you can join us for that. On April 22nd, we're having a fundraiser for our cycling without age program, and so that program is a partnership with Pioneer Care. And basically, we're going to bring a tri-show, which is a bike that has two seats in the front and a seat for the driver in the back, to take senior citizens out for bike rides and get them out into the community. So really looking forward to launching that program this summer. The Affinity Plus Lake Alice 100 is scheduled for May 11th, and that's going to be all day that Saturday, so that's a great event, too. We encourage people to come out for one lap or all 87, which is a full century ride or 100 miles around the lake. And then at the end of May, on the 28th, I believe it is, does that sound right, Your Honor? Is the mayor's ride. And we're actually combining that.
Be there.
We don't have any event posted on Facebook yet, but we're combining that with a tour of the new sculptural bike racks that are going to be installed throughout downtown and at the library museum. So really looking forward to that event as well. So watch Facebook or pedalff.org for more info on all of those events.
Thank you very much, Wayne. Thanks for all you do for the bicycling community. I'll just read just briefly from this proclamation. You can find a full reading of the proclamation on the city's website. But whereas 30 days of biking works to promote individuals to bicycle, share their stories, and change the way bicycling is seen in their community, and whereas Fergus Falls has been a leader in greater Minnesota for participation in 30 days of biking every year since 2014, and whereas 30 days of biking works to make bicycling accessible to all people and contributes to Fergus Falls' growing reputation as a bicycle-friendly community, now therefore I, Ben Shire, Mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim April 2019 to be 30 days of biking month in the city of Fergus Falls. Thank you. Under the consent agenda, there's a copy in your packet, as well as Lynn has a copy on the board for us. If there's any item that anyone would wish to discuss individually, you can pull that item. If not, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions tonight, we'll have a second reading of ordinance 847 series, which is the authorizing of issuance of 3,500,000 in general obligation bonds by the Fergus Falls Port Authority, and this has been through committee. This has been discussed. However, I have had a couple people just ask me to clarify the project, and so with that, I'm going to ask Andrew Anderson to speak briefly into the background, the history, and the future of this project.
Absolutely. Thank you, Your Honor members. I also was unprepared, so I'm going to end my Facebook Live video. No, I'm teasing. This project is related to the Level 4 Education Center that Lakes Country Service Cooperative is proposing. The Port Authority has entered into a purchase agreement with the owner of the building in the industrial park. That's the former Army Reserve building, and the Port Authority recently entered into a contract with BHH Architects to design the construction build-out and help with that process. The intention is that the Port Authority will upfront all the costs related to the acquisition, build-out, bonding, and everything else, and then we will enter into a lease agreement with Lakes Country Service Cooperative to cover the costs, all costs, associated and related to the project. We're simply acting from the Port Authority's perspective as the conduit for that project. For the Port Authority to issue general obligation bonds, which is necessary in this case to help this project along, the city council has to, by ordinance, give the ability to pledge the full faith and credit or that general obligation of the city taxpayers to that project. So that's what's before you this evening. I will mention, we set the limit, the estimate for the project is right about 3 million, just under 3 million related to acquisition, build-out, and everything else. We're setting the limit on the ability to bond at 3.5 million through this ordinance, just in case there's any unforeseen or to provide a little bit of wiggle room. Again, Lakes Country Service Cooperative is on the hook for any and all costs associated with the project, and we have an agreement to that effect. That's been signed by both parties, but we wanted to allow us a little bit of wiggle room in case bids weren't where they needed to be, or we had some other unforeseen throughout the design process, and that's why you're seeing 3.5 million dollars. We'll only bond for the amount that's necessary to complete the project. We're very likely not even going to see the 3 million dollar mark, but didn't want to have to delay that project or slow the process down and come back to the council if there was an unforeseen that came up throughout the process. But again, I'll reiterate the fact that Lakes Country is on the hook for any and all overruns and any costs associated with the project, so it's really going to be up to them how we scale back and/or add things as we go through that design process. So I don't have anything else. Bill, do you want to add anything to that?
No. Well said. Thank you. Anyone on the council?
I can add to that, Your Honor, and just also to let you know that time is somewhat of the essence in the sense that they're looking to get partial of this building up and running by September, the beginning of the school year. So, you know, that's another reason for kind of, you know, requesting a buffer in this program.
Anything else? Questions from the audience? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Tonight we have claims in the amount of 1,949,380.42, and if there's any questions, I will direct those to our finance director. I believe there's two entries in there that are wrongly labeled. Correct?
Correct. So you've got your email from me that, yeah, wrong vendor number was put in, but that has since been corrected, so.
Everyone clear on that?
Good.
I have a question for.
That'll go through the audit. What's that? That'll go through the audit. Oh, absolutely.
There's an artistic bike rack with Carl Zackman for $2,500. Where is that, and what kind of budget is it coming out of?
So that's exactly what Wayne Hurley was just talking about, these artistic bike racks. Carl Zackman actually upfronted the cost of the material, so we're just reimbursing him. It's coming out of Lakes Region Arts Council. Lakes Region Arts Council grant and some other fundraising from, I believe, five organizations, so completely grant and fundraising funded, so.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Any other questions for Bill? If not, is there a resolution to approve those payments?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Caroline? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
There are no board, committee, or department reports this evening, and there are also no reports from staff or administrative officers. Under old and unfinished business, item number one is a discussion relating to the airport management and flight-based operator agreements. And for those who were not at the 4:30 work session, Andrew, do you want to just recap very briefly, and we'll turn it over to the council for what action they would like to see take place tonight?
Sure, Your Honor. Thank you, members. The Airport Advisory Committee is asking that the city rescind a previous resolution that was made, asking the city to go out for an RFP process. The conversation that we had at the work session was to try to find a compromise between the position of the airport board, which is to extend the current agreement two years, and the desire of some, including myself, to go through an RFP process after 10 years in agreement with the current operator at the airport. In light of trying to find a compromise and to work with the Airport Advisory Committee, the conversation was ended where they would have the ability to work on a strategic plan, potentially extend the contract with the current operator, and then have a couple opportunities to do performance evaluation related to that agreement with the intention of mid to late 2020 providing notice that we would be going out for an RFP process. If the council wanted to act on that this evening, they certainly could, or if the Airport Advisory Committee, as I understood it, offered to lay out maybe a cleaner timeline highlighting some of those steps, if that would be the desire of the council as well. So that was my takeaway from the conversation. There's a few reps here from the airport board. I don't know if there's anything that they would like to add, but I think we're fairly in agreement, it's just a matter of what that looks like and how we move that forward.
Okay. Scott, did you have a question?
Well, to get the discussion started, I'd like to make a motion, and then we can discuss.
Certainly.
I think that the presentation that they made laying out the timeline with the two-year window and whatnot was very well thought out and a good presentation, and I'd like to move that we accept their proposal, their presentation as the proposed timeline and move forward with that as they suggested.
I would second that, Your Honor. Okay. Thank you. Discussion?
Your Honor.
One question. Oh, go ahead, Tom. I would just have asked one question, and I don't remember if it was on there. Is the strategic plan, the two performance reviews, and the ultimate resulting action of an RFP included in that two-year timeframe, or was it?
Yes.
All those, all, each of those milestones, if you will, are separate but yet included in that timeline? Just laid out. Okay. Tom?
So I kind of, I didn't really say much during our work session because I was just kind of taking all the information in, but I would feel, I don't feel comfortable taking any action on it tonight. I would feel more comfortable if we had, you know, a time. I think to justify delaying the RFP process, I would, I'd be more comfortable if we had, you know, a printout of exactly what, you know, what's involved in the strategic plan, what's, you know, what's the timeline, you know, what are the contingencies, you know, what's it going to, what's going to happen at the end of it? You know, I would just like to see all of that laid out clearly before we take any action on it.
Thank you, Tom. Other thoughts? The motion on.
Can we present something?
Yeah. I was going to say, I think that's, don't we have that information?
Robbie, would you like, please come to the lectern.
Thank you, sir. I believe we presented it pretty clearly within the work session prior to this with the establishment of having two performance agreements as well as an RFP established. It's not that we do not want the current manager to be a part of this whole process. We are currently working without an agreement, so the current manager, Kurt Malachi, is actually working just in good faith to produce services out there that he has done in 10 years, and I think it's on our aspect as far as an advisory committee to advise you people that it would be in your good faith to continue and support their agreement or their good faith into a potential two-year term, just because we don't have anybody out there. Josh made a good comment, the council representative, that Kurt is supplying the fuel, Kurt is doing all of the insurance, Kurt is doing all this, and would you want, you know, after three months more about him just offering good faith to potentially be gone? So I have a feeling if we don't do anything now, that it could be terrible, you know, be a bad deal for our city just to have nobody in place during some of the busier months of the airport, so.
Thank you, Robbie. Tom, did you have a?
Yeah, so to address that, I mean, I'm not talking about pushing this out for months. I mean, I would, I'd feel more comfortable if we had that information before the next council meeting. And then, Andrew, if I may ask, I mean, are we exposed to any harm by delaying this for two more weeks while we, you know, study more information, ask a few more questions?
Your Honor members, Councilmember Rufe, the only harm would be if the current manager decided to walk away. We would be in a position where we would have to figure out without any time to prepare how we would operate airport in the interim. You know, I agree he's operating in good faith, and I don't envision that that would happen, and I've heard that he has an interest in continuing, obviously, based on the stuff that was presented. I don't envision that happens, but that is a risk I guess we run as long as we continue to operate without an agreement in place.
So, okay, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I'll just say that, I mean, with, I think with the current, you know, laser focus that we need to have on economic development, I think we need to take, you know, whatever time we can to make sure that the decisions that we're making are the decisions that are best for our taxpayers, so. I mean, I look forward to participating in the process and making sure that it's open, free, and fair, and this could very well be the way to go to continue on this, the current agreement that we have, but I, you know, I'm just saying personally, I would like a little bit more time after the work session we had today to make that decision.
Your Honor.
Anthony?
I mean, I think I would kind of concur with Member Rufe. Obviously, the council has heard, obviously, the discussion from the Airport Advisory Committee, and I don't think two weeks would hurt anything, but I would also kind of want to just address that, you know, have we paid Kurt for January, February, March? I mean, you know, he's submitted bills and we're paying him. So he's not doing it gratis, just so that people know that he's being paid. So, you know, we're not, you know, so just to clear any misunderstanding that he's not doing it out of the love of his heart, we are paying him. But I think two weeks, you know, I've been involved in going to several of the Airport Advisory Committee meetings, and I agree, too, that, you know, we have a judicial duty to look at kind of what, you know, we've had three or four people kind of express interest in managing the airport, so, you know, listening to what they have to say would honor be fair. And, you know, if the councils had kind of, you know, the presentation this afternoon that, you know, two weeks to the next council meeting isn't going to kill anybody.
I think the biggest thing would be is, is that it would be a two-week period, that it would be basically in limbo, plus the period of the people actually reviewing the processes of those potential candidates, plus the fact of a 30-day potential notice of that new person to be involved with Kurt to know the every day. So I foresee it being a two-month, no matter what.
Yep. Just to clarify, I don't think that either Councilmember Rufe or Councilmember Hicks is advocating for a change at this point. They're simply advocating for making the decision that Mr. Kwame put forward two weeks from now rather than tonight. And just to clarify, your motion was in favor of the timeline that was set out. Was it also in favor of a two-year extension on the contract? I didn't, I don't, I don't want to pull words in your mouth, but I also don't, I don't know what I heard. I don't.
As I understand it, there's, it's two separate things.
Okay.
We can accept the proposal that they've given us for a timeline with the performance reviews and the RFP and the various factors, but then I felt that it also has a second decision to make about issuing a new RFP. That would be, that would be a separate motion, a separate decision, as I understand it.
So yours just dealt with the timeline, the RFP, I'm sorry, not the RFP. Did you plan the reviews and then ultimately the RFP, that they align at the end of the?
I have a question. So where do we come up with a contract in there for, like, is that included in this timeline that the contract is extended?
I think that would have to be a separate decision.
So we've got three decisions ahead of us, basically?
I guess I only saw it as two. There's this timeline that includes a performance review and the development of the process and the eventual RFP, and the other decision being to issue a new contract for the current operator for the next window of time, two-year period.
Your Honor, I guess I thought when I seconded, you had included the contract.
I'll let you make that motion, Jim.
Well, let's keep, should we keep it separate? Are we okay to have?
We can do that.
Let's just, let's keep Scott's motion on the table, that is to accept the timeline presented by the Airport Advisory Committee, and we're all clear on what that is? Any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
Aye.
Same sign, I get two noes.
I said aye.
Anyway, that, six to three, is that correct?
Two.
Two, I'm sorry, Mr. Rufe or Mr. Hicks?
That motion.
Carries.
Okay, then I would make the motion that we extend the contract for two years.
During this time?
During this time that they're going through that process.
And I'll second that.
Discussion? I think we've discussed.
Can I just have a clarifying point on that? Is that two years from when the most recent one ended, or is that two years from December 31st?
It would be two years from when the last one ended, which would have been the end of the year.
December 31st.
Now with. This would need to be a resolution.
And, Your Honor.
Resolution.
Your Honor, and members, the contract expired February 20.
February 20.
So, that's a resolution, Scott. You're fine with seconding a resolution?
Yes.
Now, is that with the understanding that after two years, we are going to be going out for an RFP?
That was in.
It was in the first.
It was in the first motion.
Okay, it's in the first. All right. All right. Any other questions, comments?
I was, I would suggest that two years is a long time. I mean, you know, I mean, the fact that we have people that are actually knocking on the door, asking us, you know, for the opportunity to bid for the contract of managing the airport, I don't think we're being fair to either the citizens of Fergus Falls or to the, you know, the people that have expressed interest. If we didn't have anybody that was interested in managing the airport, then I think it would be fair to extend this contract by two years. But the fact that we do, we're saying to the people of Fergus Falls that, you know, we're not being responsible to you and the people that have expressed an interest, we're saying we don't agree that, you know, anybody in this city could come forward and express an opportunity to do something for the community. And, you know, the present operator would be equally, you know, inclusive in that, in that group and have the opportunity to write a proposal, so I don't think they have anything to lose. We've heard enough stories, you know, by people that are not satisfied with the service that they get, and, you know, I think, you know, one of the things that the airport committee is doing is defining that in what we've just passed in terms of kind of, you know, responsibilities and accountability, but I think giving them two years to do that is too long. I mean, the present manager has had 10 years, and at the end of the day, you know, people are not, are not happy with the service, and the problem is we can't define it, which is what the Airport Advisory Committee is proposing to do, is to define it and then monitor it. So I would propose that, you know, and advocate that a year would be adequate for this, and, you know, that we could, should go out for an RFP within a year, because I think we have to be fair to the other people who are not.
Caroline?
Technically, with what we had discussed, the RFP will go out in 18 months, so I think that's, you know, with the way that the current manager has been operating, I think that's a fine timeline because we, the RFP will happen, and I think it's, I think it's fine that it happens in 18 months from now.
Any other?
I'd just say, first of all, I just want to recognize the committee and, you know, let you guys know that I appreciate what you're doing. I think it's, I mean, I, I'm a pilot, I love the airport, and it's, you know, it's great that we have such an engaged group of individuals doing what you guys are doing, and I, so I appreciate that, and I don't, I mean, I don't want to give the impression that I, you know, I'm trying to hinder what you're doing. I'm just, I just want to keep the process, you know, expedient and open and give everyone a fair crack at it within a reasonable timeframe. So I would agree with what Anthony, Councilmember Hicks says. I think, you know, a timeline of a year would be, would be my preferred option.
I got a question. In terms of the timeline that was laid out during the work session, I mean, I'm not a pilot, and these are volunteers. I don't, I don't know, is it realistic to expect them to, because I would assume we'd is it realistic to expect them to, because I would assume we'd want to have that strategic plan done, and I assume we'd want to have a vision for the airport, and we'd want to have all those things. From what I heard at 4:30, this is a fast timeline as it is, and I don't know that unless I heard wrong, but I, I don't know that we can expect them, as volunteers, to get everything done in nine months to do a three-month RFP. Is that, is that fair?
Actually, it's only six months, because they'd be looking at doing it in August of this year.
Correct.
Then in August of next year. So, I'd, I'd see no way they could get through it that quickly.
And, and to your guys' point, I mean, I, I understand, and I, I, I don't disagree, I just don't know how they're going to be expected to help to come up with a, a true good RFP process, so at the end result, we, we have a fair process and we know what we're looking for. That's just my thought.
Your Honor. Thanks, Justin, Tom.
To, to respond, I, I think that's why waiting another couple of weeks to make the decision would be prudent to find out more about exactly, I mean, you know, what, what it, what, flesh out the strategic plan a little bit more. And I, you know, I don't think that the strategic plan, I think that's a separate thing from, I mean, you guys are going to have the same strategic plan regardless of who's running the airport, right? I mean, the, the committee is going to come up with the strategic plan for the airport, not for the operator. So, you know, when we're talking strategic plan versus who the operator might be, it's, it's somewhat apples and oranges. So, going back to my point of, you know, wanting to get more information from the committee or the commission, and, and just a couple more weeks to, to mull it over.
Thanks, Tom. So, the resolution on the...
But we already voted on that, Tom, and we...
Nope, I'm just, just seeing my piece. All right. Anything else? Everyone understand the resolution? It's to extend the current agreement with the airport manager for two years, starting as of February 28th. Is that accurate? Pardon? Sure. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Rufe.
No.
No.
Arnessen.
Yes.
Cassison.
Yes.
Hicks.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Five, three, five affirmative votes, so that resolution is approved. Thanks for the engaging conversation, and again, thank you to the Airport Advisory Committee for the time that's been spent on this, and just for the time in general that, the new, just for those who weren't here at 4:30, it's, it's obvious that there's a new energy on that Airport Advisory Commission, and we really appreciate that work, so look forward to working with you. Item number two is a, an agreement with unique opportunities, the amended agreement and restated agreement with unique opportunities, and I will call on Andrew Brum to get this conversation started.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. In your packet was the memo I prepared back in February when we kicked off the conversation, and I'll probably just reiterate what I said then, but don't really have anything new to add at this point. As you all recall, at the December 28th meeting last year, the City Council passed a resolution that the city suspend its performance under the original agreement until the developer could become, or would cure all defaults that were issued or perceived at that time. As a result of that, staff has just kind of been waiting to see if the developer is going to cure those defaults, or if the developer was going to approach the City Council and try to propose another solution to the issue. And this evening, that's exactly what's happening. The developer, Unique Opportunities, is here to ask the City Council to consider an amended resolution from the original agreement. And so, under the proposed agreement that the developer is asking you to consider this evening, it would reduce the pay-as-you-go TIF note from the potential $389,100 in the principal amount related to the one building that's been constructed on site to $375,000. They have also agreed to pay any and all fees that have been derived as a result of these changes, and they also agreed to proceed with the final plat. As you recall, we've approved the preliminary plat, and they would also include the trail easement through their property to the city. The final piece of that agreement is that the developers has indicated that they will remain in the best practices rental registration program throughout the life of the agreement, and that is our program that requires inspection every certain amount of time depending on how the performance of that unit was, so just, just so you all know. This evening, I see the council having three options. One, they can accept the proposed changes and improve the agreement as presented. Two, they can reject this proposal from the developer and maintain the previous position, which is to suspend their performance and keep the original agreement in place. Or finally, the City Council has the ability this evening to propose different terms that would be acceptable to the city, which would then be up for consideration by the development group. If the council elects to proceed with this proposal or an amended proposal, there's essentially two actions that need to be taken, but we can combine them into one, and that would be to approve a resolution that authorizes the execution of an amended and restated development agreement, as well as execution of an assignment and assumption of rights and obligations agreement. Though, that single resolution was included in your packet, and also, original and redline versions of, of both of these agreements were included in your packet for consideration. With that being said, as I mentioned earlier, this is really at the request of, of the developer, this is really, it's, the ball is in their court to make a request of this nature, and I think it would be appropriate and prudent to ask the developer to say a few words to maybe outline their thought process and, and potentially try to justify what they're proposing here this evening. So I'll, I'll stop at that, and I think it's best to turn it over to the development group at this point.
Thank you, Andrew. At this time, I asked that Samuel Herzog would have the opportunity to, to address the council.
Samuel Herzog, 213 West Vernon Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, for the opportunity to be here tonight. Two years ago today, April 1st, 2017, the building we're talking about opened. Since that time, on any given day, there's been roughly 70 Fergus Falls residents that have called this property their home. Through the past two years and during the building process, there's obviously been significant frustrations on both sides of the table. You know, most of us are all aware of those, I've had conversations with many of you about our frustrations, and I'm sure you're all aware of the city's frustrations as well. At this point, I hope we can all agree that it's time to move on and, and put this behind us, and I think that's in everybody's best interest. You know, looking at the note, we worked with the city's bond attorney, Mary Hippel, in coming up with a new proposal for the council to review tonight, and that's what you guys have in front of you. We lowered the amount of, from what it could be to 375. The reason that number was chosen is because that's currently the amount that is owed to our bank on this project. You know, basically, when we go forward with the project, we receive TIF, we go get a loan against that TIF that we originally received for the building, and we, we have to pay that back to, to a bank, that money's already been spent, and then that's where that number came from. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have, and I'm hoping that after tonight, this is something we can all move on from and look back and make better decisions going forward because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herzog. Are there any questions of Mr. Herzog? Tom?
Oh, I don't have a question, but in the interest of getting the discussion going, I would make a resolution that we amend the agreement from 375,000 down to 360,000, keeping the other term the same.
So, amending from 375 to 360, the agreement? Is there a second to that?
I'll second, so we can have a discussion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin, so we have a resolution in a second to amend the agreement down to 360,000. Okay, thank you, Tom, thank you, Justin, discussion?
I can go first, Your Honor. I mean, I kind of, I, I don't agree with obviously adjusting it down, I mean, I, I think that, you know, the decision we took in December, which was to, you know, maintain the project as it was, you know, is still the right decision ultimately. You know, the, you know, this, this is taxpayer money that we're paying out, and, you know, we entered this agreement in good faith, you know, to build X apartments within that zone and build those buildings and ultimately have a trail across the river, and, you know, we, we haven't been able to do that. And I think that, you know, our best course of action would actually be to stay with the original agreement. At the end of the day, you know, they did transfer the property from Unique to H9, and at that time, we were led to believe that Mr. Samuel Herzog was not involved in, in H9, but tonight, you know, he's here speaking again. So I, I think that going back to the original agreement is, is the right course of action for us to do. You know, amending it is not, not the right thing to do. We've got plenty of other projects in town that require taxpayer money, you know, we need, we need to repair our roads, and, you know, we need to kind of look at how we're going to fund an aquatic center and a community center. So, I think, you know, the goal was, you know, we're, we're told that we have a shortage of housing, you know, that was the, the whole purpose of doing this TIF funding, was to get the housing. We're not getting the amount of units that was in the original concept and the original deal, so I think we should stick to the original deal, and I, from what I understand, they're prepared to do that. So, I would say we stick to the original.
Thank you, Anthony. Other thoughts, Tom?
I'll just say that, you know, Mr. Herzog alluded to the frustrations that have come up during this project, and, and I've heard from people, constituents, I've heard people demanding that we tear the building down, I've heard people saying, leave them alone and walk away, and, and I, I don't think with the work that needs to be done in the city and the other priorities that we need to have, that continuing this discussion any longer is, is worth it. You know, I'm, I'm very adamant that, that we as a city make changes to our codes and ordinances and policies and procedures to make sure that the, the types of issues that we had with this project don't happen again. But, so with knowing that going forward, I just believe it's, it's time to, to vote and make a decision on this and, and move on.
Thank you, Tom. I would, I would agree with you that it's time to move on from this, and just a, a couple, I think there's people in this community who, in hindsight, don't like the fact that we agreed to a TIF agreement with this development before it started. I don't think we can use that as consideration, because we are where we are. It was the council, previous council, but it was the City Council that denied the plat that would have allowed them to go forward and build the buildings. So, yes, we have transferred title, which was, which was part of, I think, a consequence of that, and we do have the, the fact that the building was placed in the, in the right of way. We've, we've acknowledged that, we've gone back and forth, we've talked about it, but at the end of the day, the city made an agreement to offer TIF to the developer. When the city denied the plat, the city went back based on the council's actions to try to find a compromise to move forward, to settle and, and to, to move forward on the deal, and so I think it's, I, I would agree with you, Tom, I think it's time to move forward, you've proposed a compromise, and I guess that's, I just wanted to say, I agree that it's time to move forward on this. Brent?
Well, I'm going to go along with Anthony here, I think they need to stick with the agreement, because right now, they're getting their TIF money back, which is really not costing the taxpayers any money. If they build more buildings, they're getting the TIF money back, that's not costing the taxpayers any money. But if they just walk away that it is now, and they give us our easements, now, the trails that everybody wants, that they were supposed to build, we now have to build. So now, it's starting to cost the taxpayers money. And whether I'm for the trails or whether I'm not for the trails, the point is, is a lot of people want them, and they're going to eventually go through, which means now it comes on our back instead of theirs. And that's why I think with everything that has went on with this project, I just think, you know, we're willing to overlook the whole thing with transferring it over to H9 and let them get back on track and let them build the buildings. Either way it goes, you know, if we don't do it, we're going to end up paying in the end in this way, the only thing that we're losing is money they would have paid, which we're not getting if the land sits there vacant anyway. So, I just think they need to stick with the original agreement, otherwise I think in the long run, we're going to end up paying for trails. And that was part of the agreement.
Thank you, Brent. Other comments?
And, and I think in terms of closure, I think the council did make a decision in December 28th, and, you know, it's got brought back up again. So, you know, I, I think it's, you know, the council did close it in, in 2018, at the same time as we accepted, you know, that there was an easement issue, even though the two things are separate. So, you know, the developer is the one that came back and brought it up again three months later, not the council.
And I, I mean, I, to respond to that, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, with being the one, you know, who brought it back up, if that is the case, because I, I don't, it's, if we don't resolve it, we're going to be talking about it for the next two years, when we could be talking about how excited we are about the positive things that are, are going to happen in our community versus, you know, dredging up the same issues over and over again. And so that's, that's where I'm at on it.
Yes.
I don't know if this is a, a fair question, was brought up tonight, that the development group is willing and able to continue on with the development, I'm sure they've changed their focus on other projects, is, can you speak to that? Is that, in part of our conversation, it sounds like?
I, I can speak to that, and there would be a couple things I would say. January 25th, 2018, we received a letter from Ralph Nickel, local city attorney, specifically telling us the city was not going to support any future building. So, we took that as the city isn't going to support any more building, and at that time, we started putting our resources towards other projects. I think it's also valid to point out that a lot of these apartment buildings house the low-to-mid-level working class, and some of the changes in the retail environment in Fergus Falls since 2016 have made other forms of housing more of a necessity, I think, than continued apartment growth at this time.
Thank you, Samuel. Any other, Scott?
Well, at the risk of derailing this pretty dramatically, I guess, I've got to at least ask a question.
Sure.
I've had a conversation with Sam earlier, and with others as well, about the possibility of the other buildings in this initial plan being done, and it was my understanding from Sam that their preference at this point would be to not do those other buildings, and frankly, would be happy to sell the land, the remaining land, to another developer or to another entity, and then to take this revised agreement and be done as far as any more further projects. I think that would be a reasonable resolution. He's, he's expressed interest in doing that, and so to that, then the question is, if that land was available, is it possible for the city, through the Port Authority, to buy that land? Of that, the part that's not developed yet?
Certainly.
And at the risk of derailing the conversation dramatically, that's, but that's where I was headed with the question, can the Port Authority, can the city buy that land? If that's a possibility, that would affect how I would look at where we'd want to go forward.
So, and I would, I guess, I would say certainly, the city, the Port Authority can buy... Legally, you can. Yes, the answer is yes.
Your Honor, however, I would question whether the Port Authority will or should.
Sure.
I mean, it's...
Discussion for another day.
I call the question on the vote.
Just so everyone's certain on what we're voting on. So, your resolution reduced the agreement presented tonight from 375,000 to 360,000, and the resolution also...
Well, I, I just want to make sure that we're clear, because the remainder of the terms would stay the same under your resolution, I assume, and the other thing that I would suggest is that you make the, you make it contingent on being agreeable to the development group, unless he's willing and able to make the commitment right now, I would say it's contingent on, on the fact that it would be acceptable to them. So he's, he's saying that he'd be agreeable to it, maybe you want to say that at the podium, Samuel, so...
In the interest of moving forward, we will agree to that if it's approved tonight.
So we don't need the contingent?
I, I think for formality's sake, I would, it's assuring that Samuel just made that commitment, but what I wouldn't want is the City Council to, yeah, I wouldn't want the City Council to pass something that transfers the property and then have the developer say, wait a second, we're not in agreement with that. So, I, I would urge you to do it contingent, if Samuel's agreeable to what she just said he was, we'll, in this, is approved this evening, we'll get it signed and, and sealed up and done sooner than later.
Yeah, just to be safe, I would amend the resolution to include that contingency.
Thank you.
I'll second the amended resolution.
Mr. Arnessen, and then, just, you, you had mentioned that two, two parts that we need to cover under any resolution, did, are we...
Yeah, let me just reiterate that, and so you're, you're passing a resolution authorizing the execution of a, of an assignment and assumption of rights and obligations agreement in an amended and restated development agreement, with all the terms being the same, with the exception of the principal TIF amount reduced from the 375 as presented to 360,000, as I'm hearing it, with that contingency.
Yes. Is everyone clear? What?
And then that still includes reimbursing us for all our fees that we will be having, right?
Same as is in the proposed. Lori, did you have a comment, because we're going to vote on this, but we, certainly, if you have a comment?
Yeah, I think from the Lori Mullen, 2840 Liquid Drive, and I've been watching this process right from the start. I, as a citizen, don't want to see my tax dollars go to this project. It's, it was built with less quality than it should have been, you, you look at this compared to the one behind, the Target, and there, there's just no comparison to the, the two properties. I guess I'm wondering too, why this one ended up having interest included in with the TIF agreement, where, I know that the Target one was a TIF as well, and that did not have...
And has interest too.
That didn't have interest.
A lot of our housing ones have had interest, some of them had, had principal only, I'd have to go back and see, but...
Yeah, that one only had principal only, I've looked at that agreement too.
But others, I know, have had interest.
But this is 360,000 out of something that could go towards road repair, we've talked about youth and kids activities in this community, and I'd rather see it go to that.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Arnison.
Yes.
Cassison.
Yes.
No.
Fish.
Yes.
Pinkberry.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. I'd just say, I hope we will move on. This has been one that we've talked, it's brought a lot of passion. People have strong feelings on both sides of this, and I think now there's some land that could possibly be developed, and I think we just, we all move on. And so thanks for all the passion on all sides because we all care about the community. Scott, did you have something?
I think it wouldn't hurt if there was just one point of clarification made, that the 360,000 is not a check that the city's going to write and hand to them. It'll be 360,000 that the city will not receive in taxes over time.
That we're not there when the projects start.
Right.
It's money that we've received.
Through the course of this agreement, which runs, what is it, 15 years, 20 years, until the tax amount adds up to that 360, through the course of that window of time, we will not receive 360,000 in tax revenue as a city.
Yep.
Correct?
Correct. And as well, to add on to that one thing, just for clarification, the original agreement that the city council passed with this project was 1.3, I believe, million dollars in TIF over the same course of time.
Plus interest.
Plus interest. So by moving forward here, we're not agreeing against 360 that has not, it's a portion of the project that was committed by a previous council.
So what happens with TIF is with the new improvements, I'm going to stand up here. I just want you to be clear on tax increment. So you have a piece of property that gets redeveloped. You start with this base tax capacity, and let's say you're collecting $100 on that parcel right now, and that $100 is getting divvied up over the various taxing jurisdictions. That will continue on that base value. Then you build something on that property, and you have new value now that'll be taxed. And what we call that is we're capturing that tax capacity for X number of years. In this case, it's over the 20-year period. So then the taxes generated on that project then get used to fund this tax increment revenue note. It's called a pay-as-you-go revenue note. So we only pay that revenue note if the owner of the property pays their taxes. So they pay their taxes, Otter Tail County then pays the city a portion of that, that captured value. We take off an administration percentage off of that, and then that's what we use to pay that revenue note. If we pay that note off prior or collect enough funds to pay that off before the 20 years, it expires. If, for some reason, the tax values are different 10 years from now, it will expire at the end of 20 years, whether they've collected the 360 or not. So again, capturing that tax increment value is the concept behind TIF, so.
Thank you, Bill. There is no new business this, oh, I'm sorry. Under item number three is the community task force membership update. We spoke about this two weeks ago. You have a list of the names that was, of the organizations that was identified. I'll just read those off. This is an update, if anyone had any names that I liked. So from the school would be the new superintendent, Jeff Drake, as well as a student representative. From the Aquatic Center, Bridget Leonard, the YMCA, the executive director and the board president. That's Eric Price and Chris Marvel. Greater Fergus Falls, Steve Rufer. The Downtown Riverfront Council, Steve Erickson. From West Central Initiative, Anna Wassasha and Rebecca Peterson. From the United Way, Mary Philippi. From Visit Fergus Falls, Jean Bowman. Wearing many hats, Mr. Wayne Hurley. From the Parks and Trails, the Historical Society, amongst many others. From Lake Alice, former council member Rick Wilson. Arts, Michael Bergeroff. From the Business Community, Lisa Workman from the Chamber of Commerce. Justin Arnison and Krista Hagberg from the city council. And then one that you, we had mentioned, you guys directed, was a senior center. It's not on this list, but Kathy Spory will be the designated. And of course, if she would like to appoint someone else from her board or from her membership, that would be up to her. The timeline outlined on the second page, just look that over. But the one I wanted to highlight was two things related to the May 7th through the 16th, and that's where we talked about each of the council members being involved in a public input session, where the public would be invited to, and the council members would be asked to facilitate those conversations, along with those members who expressed interest in being part of the process. The individuals that didn't necessarily represent a particular stakeholder group, but expressed interest in being a part, we would reach out to them. And so between the council members and those individuals, host community stakeholder, or community input listening sessions between the two weeks of May 7th through the 16th. So with that, if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Ben?
Yes.
Amongst the people that you've identified here, have you selected or will they be expected to select their own chairman?
That's a good question. I actually, I've asked Anna Wassasha to help facilitate, and I anticipate chairing this myself with Anna Wassasha being the facilitator. So I guess I maybe should have put my name on there, and I forgot to tell myself I was going to do that. But the board will, if the board has other wishes, they can do that. Any other questions? Good question, though. Thank you, Scott. With that, just a couple miscellaneous announcements.
I do, your honor members. In light of just hearing that microphone make some noise, I wanted to indicate that I just signed an agreement at the end of last week to make those repairs, and I don't have an exact timeline, but it's coming. So in the next couple of months, we may hear that, but we're actively working on trying to get that resolved, so good segment.
And when we go into the installation of that, we may actually have to meet off-site, either at the Police Department Community Room or the Public Library Community Room during the installation of the new system. But we'll keep you posted as that comes. But the order's been placed.
How about Union Pizza?
Sounds good.
That works.
So on April 10th, at 7:00 AM is our next committee, the whole meeting. And then I want to extend an invitation to the public. Obviously, I think the council's all aware, but on April 11th at 7:00 PM, actually starting at 6:30, we're going to, we're working with Visit Fergus Falls, with the Downtown Riverfront Council, with a number of other groups to put on the state-of-the-city address. And that will be officially begin at 7:00 PM at a center for the arts in downtown Fergus Falls. At 6:30, the high school jazz band is going to play. The Jazz Manian Devils are going to be playing outside a little bit. The PB&amp;J Children's Choir is going to sing that night, as well as the chamber singers are going to sing the Star Spangled Banner. The color guard's going to be involved, and hopefully Jimmy will be able to be a part of that. We also have Representative Bud Nornus, Senator Bill Engel-Britson, and Governor Tim Walz will be joining us that evening in Fergus. So hopefully, it's a very special night, and we will, again, just like to extend a special invitation to all the, to everyone as part of this community, not necessarily only residents, but people that are involved and a part of this community. And then on April 13th, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 to 3:00, it's the grand opening of the official grand opening of the library. And that's from 9:00 to 3:00, and there's going to be many, many activities surrounding that. So we invite you to come and join us for that as well. With that, we will be adjourned.